All right, well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Tuesday, September the 3rd, public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I want to welcome everybody in attendance today and everybody watching at home. Before we get started, I just want to welcome all of our Garrett County Public School students back to school today and wish everybody a happy and safe return to school. With that, I'll call this meeting to order, and if you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Pastor Kroll will lead us in the invocation. Pledge allegiance.
To the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you bow your heads with me, please? Lord God, we give you thanks for this fine day. We thank you for the weather. Thank you as we start to see the beauty of autumn. We pray, Father, that you would continue to give wisdom and insight to the commissioners, that you would bless the county through them. Pray, Father, for this point on the agenda about those who are recovery. Pray, Father, that there would be freedom from any kind of addiction throughout the entire county by your blessing, Lord. And we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Knoll, are there any additions, corrections, or changes to public meeting agenda?
There are none. Oh, no, I'm sorry, there are. We are also going to have a proclamation for emergency preparedness month.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting agenda as amended?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, agenda approved as amended by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Any questions or concerns with the minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
A motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, minutes approved by mutual consent. I do have to announce that during our administrative session, we did go into executive closed session to discuss personnel and economic development matters. All right, the first item on the agenda, we do have a recognition for Recovery Week, which is September the 8th through the 14th, and we have people here for that? All right, front row, front and center. Thanks for coming, and thanks for all the work that you do. I'll go ahead and read this, and we'll have you guys come up, and I'll give this to you, and then if you want to make any remarks, or I'm sure the paper will take some pictures and we'll go from there. This proclamation for Garrett County Recovery Week, September the 8th through the 14th, 2024, whereas barriers to accessing recovery residences are a significant problem for people with alcohol or drug use disorders, and such barriers include failures to identify affected people and direct them to recovery, inadequate public and private insurance coverage for treatment services, and shrinking state budgets that limit funding for recovery programs, and whereas it is crucial to increase awareness and education about substance use disorders to reduce the social stigma associated with the disorder and to create community in which individuals feel comfort and support in seeking treatment. By seeking help, people who experience substance use disorders can embark on a new path toward improved health and overall wellness, and whereas September's Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those in recovery, just as we celebrate health improvements made by those who are managing other health conditions such as hypertension, diabetes, asthma, and heart disease. This observance reinforces the positive message that behavioral health is essential to overall health, prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover. And whereas to help achieve this goal, the Reflection House, a recovery residence facility for women, invite all residents of Garrett County to participate in National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month and Garrett County Recovery Week. Therefore, we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, for the above reasons, are asking the citizens of Garrett County to participate in the Walk for Recovery on September the 14th, 2024, and observe the week of September the 8th through the 14th, 2024, as Garrett County Recovery Week. Signed by Commissioners Tishnall, Savage, and myself. Ladies, if you would come on up. Don't be back.
That's the way you said them.
Anybody want to say anything?
I want Andy to take it. I would like to say just thank you to the commissioners and the public for allowing us to partner with you guys and receive your support in creating the first recovery house in Garrett County. And I would like the person here standing next to me, Andy, to grab this proclamation.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is another proclamation, this time for emergency preparedness month. I have members of our staff here. Appreciate them coming out and all that they do for Garrett County. And again, I'll read this and then ask you gentlemen to come up. Garrett County Preparedness Month, September 2024, whereas National Preparedness Month is an annual campaign held each September in the United States to emphasize the importance of emergency preparedness, and whereas this initiative aims to empower individuals, families, businesses, and communities by providing them with knowledge and resources necessary to effectively respond, prepare, and recover from emergencies, ultimately reducing the impact of disasters and enhancing overall resilience by planning ahead and preparing for emergencies. And whereas National Preparedness Month originated in the aftermath of the September 11th, 2001 attacks, and has evolved into a nationwide effort involving government agencies, nonprofit organizations, businesses, schools, and communities working together to increase public awareness and preparedness, whereas the Garrett County Department of Emergency Management throughout the month of September will be providing information through multiple social media channels to supply the public with preparedness information from various trusted sources. And whereas preparedness fosters resilience, enabling families and communities to handle emergencies more efficiently and with greater confidence, ultimately saving lives and protecting property during times of adversity. Now therefore, we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as Garrett County Preparedness Month, and encourages the community to observe this knowledge. Signed by Commissioners Savage, Tishnall, and myself. And Justin and Dave, if you guys want to come up. I don't know if you guys have any words you want to share?
Sure. So I'm Justin Orndorf, Acting Director of Emergency Management, and this is David Middleton. He's our Emergency Management Planner. Just thank the commissioners for recognizing the importance of emergency management and preparedness. We do have some things planned for the month of September. We'll be rolling out a lot on social media and on our website. Just keep an eye on that. I would encourage everybody to visit the Garrett County website, The Citizen Connect, sign up for emergency alerts. We send out notifications to everybody in the event that something is happening, whether it be weather. We are experiencing drought conditions right now, so it's one thing that we're focusing on is potential wildfires this fall. I just want to start having the leaves coming down and drying out, so, yeah. But thank you all again for recognizing and having us up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Garrett County Department of Community Development and Planning, GIS Division. Sierra, I'll ask you to come up, and you have some things to present.
So, the first thing is our local roadway safety plan. Kevin, do you have that presentation? That, and then the road resolutions on the agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So, Garrett County, my name is Sierra Wigpil, Senior Planner for Garrett County, and I'm here to present to you our local roadway safety plan and initiative aimed at enhancing the safety and efficiency of our roadways. Next slide, please. This plan is made possible through Maryland's, a grant through Maryland Office of Highway Safety, and it is aiming for reaching zero deaths. Next slide, please. The state has a statewide plan for 2021 through 2025 on achieving zero deaths on the roadways, and our plans aim to align with this one. The grant was for both Allegheny and Garrett County to get a roadway safety plan. I think Allegheny County will adopt their plan this week, so. The purpose of this plan is for reduced roadways and serious injuries and fatalities on the roadway. Ultimately, the goal is to promote a safety, a culture of safety and responsibility among all road users, ensuring safe travel for all of us. We're grateful for the support in this project and for Maryland's Highway Safety Office to help develop and hopefully get funding to implement this plan. So first, we took, oh, so Mead and Hunt were our consultants, and they took a look at our data that Maryland Highway Safety Office and State Highway Administration provided to kind of find the high injury network. So they used GIS data and kind of found hotspots, and then we got some agency input. Our main focus group for stakeholders was Garrett County's Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee. And then we also, and this is the part of the community engagement, so if there's something maybe overlooked, or you guys want to help me, help us emphasize in this plan, this is the moment where we're taking those comments. Next slide, please. So this was data from, for Allegheny and Garrett County combined. The next slide, Kevin. This one kind of gives you an idea of like the state versus Garrett County. So if this was to scale, the Garrett County's like circle would not be visible. Luckily, we want to reduce the fatalities to zero, but there, there's a small amount of crashes and fatalities for Garrett County. This is due to like our population being small, but also hopefully this plan addresses some behaviors and things that are preventable, so we can see less injuries and fatalities on the road. So next slide, please. So this kind of was like a hotspot map showing where fatalities and serious injuries occurred. Granted, our data, like if somebody had a fender bender and didn't call the police, not all the data necessarily gets like reported, but as you can see, I-68 is a major hotspot, probably due to speeds, and also where there's congestion in the network along 219, 135, and also in Oakland is a hotspot. Next slide, please. So this was some analysis that our consultants did for both Allegheny and Garrett County, but there's a lot of accidents involving animals, which is, I'm sure, not a surprise to people when they see deer on the road. But a lot of these injuries can be prevented because they are behavior induced, whether it's distracted driving or impairment. We also found that most of the injury, like, most of the accidents happen on Monday, Friday, Saturday, between 2:00 and 6:00 p.m. There's, you know, relatively small number involving vulnerable users, but once again, I think it's because a lot of are communicative and as walkable as it could be, so hopefully we can get the number of people wanting to walk, but also making it safer increased. Next slide, please. So this kind of shows where the fatalities occurred. Keep on, next slide, please. And this is our high injury network. So these are the sections of the roadway we want to focus on in reducing and implementing either like physical, like improvements to reduce the day crashes. All right. And then there's a table that kind of over, like, shows the fatalities and injuries and kind of breaks down kind of our high injury network relating to the map that we've seen. And these are all in the plan, so we can take a more in-depth look, and that's all on the county's website. So the leading causes and contributing factors to crashes are primarily behavioral. So it's either like driving under the influence, distracted driving, like we all have something ringing in our pocket, or speeding, reckless driving. So as you can see, enforcement, education, and changing our own behaviors can contribute to reducing the number of crashes on the road. Next slide. So like then our consultants provide some emphasis areas, so some target areas where we can implement the plan to reduce those fatalities. So, and there are four emphasis areas, and they are, on the next slide is the first one, reducing the risk of roadway departure and head-on collision. So some of the accidents that we've seen resulted in either too fast or also putting rumble strips in between the road and implementing low-cost, like, safety countermeasures, like having like a, like either the rumble strip or providing guardrails. We're also seeking some funding to address some of these issues and taking a look at reducing that head-on, head-on collision or falling off the roadway departure. And then the other parts are addressing like things that, you know, because our area's mountainous and also rural, we have a lot of animals, so if there's some opportunities to provide wildlife crossings, that's something we can take advantage of. We can support the local volunteer and rescue companies. They're always in need of our support, whether it's more volunteers or funding. This plan emphasizes that, and hopefully we can seek more help in those ways. And then also, we have winter weather, so, you know, making sure we are communicating with drivers when it's not safe to drive, trying to take, like, cancel and close things when appropriate, and also, and then, and then showing if you need to be on the roadway, letting, educating drivers how to be on the roads whenever there are inclement weather, so, and also enhancing our emergency response capacity. And last, and then, there's one more after this, but speeding, aggressive driving, distracted driving, so these are all behavioral things that we can do. So putting a cell phone away when you're driving, making sure you're leaving enough time to get to your destinations, to prevent the speeding. So there's some suggestions in the plan on things that we can do to help change people's behaviors and some educational programs, as well as some things that the Sheriff's Office and the other law enforcement can do to take advantage of the highway safety office's funding to implement programs. And then lastly, protecting vulnerable roadway users. So I'm actually working, so they should see some stuff in October about increasing bicycle and pedestrian access, particularly around the Oakland Mountain Lake area. And so we're developing safety plans for that 135 corridor to make it easier for people to get around. It's like the most densely populated area of Garrett County, though it's not very walkable. And then, so, we're going to try to, so this plan links to building out the bike and ped network, so. So I'm hoping to take these to the public, and if you have any other comments or any specific areas for us to address, I would love to hear them. There's my email address. And so I presented this at the Planning Commission meeting. Today, I'm presenting here the Commissioners meeting, and then I'll hopefully be back for some adoption once some comments get integrated, but thanks for your time. Does anybody have any questions?
The Glendale Road, and I was driving that, and I thought so badly, the folks are trying to walk and bike along Glendale. Anything that you can do for that?
That one, like, I would like to get a bigger master plan for Garrett County's bike and ped, so if, yeah, that is like such a narrow roadway. It is on county roadway, but yeah, I don't want to say, hey, like, the right-of-way is just so limited for trucks and cars currently, and, you know, providing a safe way for people on it is definitely in the back of my mind, but we definitely don't want to encourage people on it right now. So yes, that's, it's on my priority list of areas that definitely need to connect it or getting, or moving the freight to some other place, so, or reducing the number of cars so the people, the unprotected users are safer. So, thanks for the comment. Yeah.
While we're on that State Park Road, the reason I'm here, everybody knows, I've sent letters to the commissioners, I've talked to Mr. Knoll. I've offered to pay for a speed bump right in front of my house. I've offered to compensate money if they wanted to put cameras on State Park Road. That's the busiest road around the lake except for 219. It's 25 miles per hour, everybody speeds there, and nobody's doing anything about it. Sheriff Myers has been great, but that's not the best use of officers sitting down there. It's a big county. I, I haven't heard anything back. I personally dropped letters off to the commissioners twice, never heard anything. I've sent several emails, nobody responds to me. And we need two speed bumps right there on that straightaway, and I'm offering to pay for one of them.
Thank you for your comment. I'll give you my card.
Yes.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Yeah, no problem. Anything else? Yes.
That raises another question. You had a lot of data in the beginning about the state versus Garrett County. They were absolute numbers. Do you have anything that puts them in context? It looked like the rate of accidents were higher in Garrett County than the state, if you looked at it as a share of population. I don't know if you looked at it as a share of cars. I don't know if you have information about whether these are seasonal or not. I would suspect there might be a lot more in the summer for the kinds of things these two guys are asking about, which might, if you have that information, it might help set priorities for the investment, so when you know the park's going to be cool in the summer, you do something. Do you have any of that information to put that in context?
I'm sure we do have that in order, like, you know, we know how many, like, cars are on the road for every, like, every vehicle mile traveled kind of data, so I can look up some more proportional numbers.
Do you know if it's seasonal?
In terms of seasonal, I doubt it, because a lot of times, these numbers are like annual, like, I, I don't know, we all have a cell phone in our pocket. I'm sure I can probably get down to like car-level data if I would be, if I could find some way to pay for it. So I'm really curious to see if there's some, like, smarter ways to get our hands on some of that data.
Anything on resident versus non-resident?
And that's, once again, I think, you know, like I said, all of our cars are basically connected, so I would be really, I think, I would love to pursue some more funding to get that deeper level information, so then, yeah, we could be a little smarter about prioritizing, like, and spending our funds. Thank you for your comment. Anything else? All right.
Thank you.
No problem.
Now you've got the road name resolution.
Resolution. So I maintain the county's GIS centerline data, and over the past couple months, we've had a couple new roads being added to the centerline. The first one is Bumblebee Camp Road, which is off Bumblebee Road. They're developing a new campground, and this would provide numbers for cabins around in the campsites for that, for emergency management purposes. It's on Tax Map 42. Then there was a request by the Backbound Ridge HOA to, there was a road that separated and then came back together, and this creates a new road name from that spur road, changing it from Christopher Way, which is the main road's name, to Hamway for Ham Radio for a member of that HOA founding member. And that's on Tax Map 104. And then there's a Whittaker Lane, which is added to the, it was on the road, it was not officially on the road inventory, but it was part of a subdivision development. We finally had an address that brought up the naming of the road. It's south of Glendale Road on a peninsula on Deep Creek Lake. And then lastly, on Tax Map 66, a driveway that was like the third address that came off Sand Flat Road, and that triggered a new road name for Story Lane. And requesting you guys to adopt the resolution, so we can incorporate those into our road inventory.
Questions? Sierra, the Ham Ridge road name change, how many addresses is that?
None, so it doesn't affect anybody to that change. It just kind of makes it less ambiguous to which park you're on.
Okay. If there are no questions, can we get a motion to approve the road name resolution number RN 24-1?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a follow-up to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. I see several members of the committee here, and again, thank you for your work on that and following through with, with the task that we asked to have done. I can say that, oh, okay, that's all right. Over the past week, we have received a lot of feedback on the recommendations presented by the committee. So if nothing else, I think the committee created a conversation. People were definitely talking about it. They obviously had read at least some of the report because they were citing some of the things in it or asking questions about it, so on and so forth, so I think that's a good thing. We did say at our last meeting, or at least our last meeting here, when we had a conversation about it, that we would be transparent with the follow-up from us on the recommendations to have an open conversation publicly about the recommendations and our response to them. We are going to follow through with that now. There were seven recommendations in the presentation, or in the report. I thought the best way to do this would be to just go through them one by one, take action on each one individually, so that everyone is open to the discussion, at least hears the discussion and any of the comments made by the commission. The first recommendation by the committee was to adopt a welcoming resolution or statement to foster an inclusive environment. I do want to say that on July 20th, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners issued a statement on diversity and inclusion and officially adopted that statement for Garrett County Government. It was Resolution 2021-1. Unless otherwise instructed, I would just like the commissioners to reaffirm our commitment to the tenets of that resolution in 2021 and have Mr. Knoll reissue that statement on our social media and our website.
I agree that we, we issued that statement, and I think, I think we're all in agreement that we will reaffirm our commitment to that. And, you know, that, that's something we did before this committee even met, so I just, I just want to reaffirm our commitment to that.
That's one of the, one of the tangible items in these, of these recommendations, and I will gladly reaffirm with these commissioners. I wasn't in on that one, but I will affirm and put my name on it as well.
All right. The second recommendation was to establish a county-level position responsible to lead diversity and inclusion initiatives. Now Commissioner Tishnall had some comments about that at the last meeting we had here. I'll just open the floor to any comments anybody may have on that particular item.
I think I've already stated my stance on that, that to create another job in the county is not something we're looking to do right now. We have tried to cut the number of employees and continue to keep a very good rapport with our people and not lose out on any, looking for a word here, can't come up with it, not cut services. But, you know, we definitely, or at least I do, I definitely applaud you all for what you did with this committee. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind that you put hours and hours and hours into it. I would welcome you to continue with the committee, but as far as us hiring an additional employee for the county, I'm, I'm just not in favor of that right now. So that's my stance on it.
Same was with Larry. We just have too many things, especially with Blueprint coming down the line. We have too many future commitments that we're just, we're not in a position to add a permanent, and what would turn into a multimillion-dollar position over the years, and we're just, we're just not in a position to do that.
So I think what I'm hearing is the commission is not in favor of that. I will, however, give an opportunity to make a motion to establish a county-level position, and lacking that motion, then that one And lacking that motion, then that one will fail to gain support. Moving on. The, the next recommendation was to maintain the Diversity and Inclusion Committee in an advisory role. Before I open that up to conversation, I would just say, if the, if the will of the board is to maintain a Diversity and Inclusion Committee, it would have to be recommissioned and reappointed. The committee, as it was designed, was set up for a specific purpose. I think the committee met that purpose, presented the report that was asked for, made the recommendations. So if the, again, if the will of the board is to continue with a Diversity and Inclusion Committee, I would argue we would have to reappoint that committee with a different charge because the charge the original committee had been met. Comments?
Well, I'll start again. I, I think I've already just said that, and what I said about hiring someone that I would welcome the committee to continue meeting, but not as a, as a Garrett County committee. We would definitely listen to any comments that you would have. You'd be free to meet here if you wanted to, wherever. But as far as us continuing this committee, I feel that you've done an excellent job in what we asked you to do to start with. And at this time, I would not have it be continued as a Garrett County entity.
What would be the cost to continue it as a Garrett County?
What would be the cost?
Yeah, would it, would it cost anything or it would be? So...
I don't think there would be a cost to actually have it.
My question is why, why not, why not continue it if there's no cost? Why?
It just, it just wouldn't continue as a, as a Garrett County entity. Any, 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 any group of, well, any group of people's welcome to, to meet on any subject, whether it be this or something else. It's just something where, at least I'm not, I'm not going to speak for these two, but I'm not in favor of, of the county itself continuing this committee.
I think your question is why not?
I, I think, let's hold the questions from the public until we get through this. There will be plenty of time to answer any questions that are asked. But I, I think just for the purpose of, of moving through these recommendations, I think I would ask that we hold public question and comment for that period of the meeting. I don't know, Commissioner Savage, if you have anything to add to, to that?
Not much, but just kind of to address that I think, like Commissioner Tischel said, any group is willing or is able to meet as they wish. I think it uncomplicates things if you don't meet as a, as a county board. I believe it makes it more simple. And any, any group is willing or is able to meet and advise us on whatever you want, and we'll certainly listen.
So again, what I'm hearing is the will of the board is not to maintain a county-appointed Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Again, I'll ask for a motion. In lack of a motion, then that recommendation would, would not pass either. I would, I would mention to that point, even in, even lacking the appointment by the commission, Garrett County commissioners, every meeting, every meeting we have, public meeting is open. There's always a comment, a question, a comment period. So it is very important. And that if people had ideas, you know, that they, they wanted to do, Chamber of Commerce, I know, does educational trainings periodically, I think through their HR roundtable. If it's something that they wanted to pick up and do some training on or something to that, that there could possibly be a role there for the county to play. This one's hard for me to address because there's not a specific ask to do X. But I think in broad terminology, I think overall, we would encourage and support training and education. Specifically what that looks like, I don't know, but I'll open that up to, to you guys.
Well, Mike Paul, I don't, I don't see a specific ask here, but I definitely, absolutely definitely would support training. Whether it be social media training or a specific group that wants to, you know, meet and get training, I'd definitely support that. I mean, to me, that's, that's, that's easy. I just think it's something that could be done and should be done throughout the entire county.
I echo their exact sentiments. Yep, I support any, any business for our entity for sure to get inclusive training and however, however they deem necessary to get it.
The next recommendation is to encourage the public school system to support students who are marginalized. I, I don't have any problem at all. Due to my other job that I have, you know, I, I think certainly, I think everyone in Garrett County and everyone everywhere should support the public school system everywhere to support all students. Every facility in Garrett County, especially school facilities, should be a place where students can come and not be ridiculed or bullied or any other terminology that you want to use. I think, I would hope that certain...
To assist in their needs, to help improve that. That's, yep.
I think if you look into my background, you'll find that children have been a very important part of my life. I've been involved with 4H for over 50 years. I coached Little League for over 30 years. And, you know, there's, there's no, there's no place for bullying, there's no place for harassment. Children ought to be given an opportunity, no matter what their, their skill level is. I don't care what their skill level is. I coached both boys and girls Little League. And I had, I had kids that couldn't catch a ball, handed it to them. But I'll guarantee you one thing, they played in every game. You know, it wasn't about winning. I wanted to win, absolutely. Yes, I want to win. But I want to teach the kids, and that's, that was my, that was my goal, and that's always been my goal. And so this, this is very easy again for me to answer because I just think there's absolutely no place for anything like that in this county, any county in this, this country.
The next request from the committee was to encourage support for festivals and other activities, events that promote inclusion of marginalized groups by various government, business, nonprofit entities, and others. Again, I, I don't see a specific ask on this, more of a support for, I, I think the way this reads in the report could include encouraging sponsoring town business associations and local municipalities to coordinate such events that would encourage and promote inclusion of marginalized groups, et cetera. So I don't, I don't know what comments you all may have on that.
I don't really have a comment.
I, I think, you know, if a town or a nonprofit, and I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I would assume that if, you know, any organization came forward and, and was looking to do something and they wanted some help with that or whatever, obviously it'd be a case-by-case basis and so on and so forth. But we would take that as a comment.
Absolutely.
And the final recommendation is to support a network of communication dissemination for the county. And again, I'll just say this, that every organization that I've ever been a part of, whether it's where I worked for the Board of Education, or here with county government, or when I was with the town, and town government, or any of the service clubs that I'm involved with, every single one of them will say, "Communication is an issue." I would agree 100% that that is the case here in county government as well. We talk about it quite often. And, and, you know, anyone that has any suggestions as to how to improve that, I'm on all ears because I don't think you can communicate enough. You know, we, we do, what the county does right now, of course, we have our website, we have our social media, the papers at every meeting, we send press releases out. Sarah does a lot of work with us right now in sending press releases out and trying to maintain our social media presence. And with all of that, I still think there's a sense of we could probably do better, and that is probably correct. And so how we go about doing that, I, I think we would all agree, we would, we would definitely be supportive of that. That's just my two cents.
We welcome any suggestions if we can do, get the word out some way better.
I just agree. I think we can always do better, no matter what you do. But I think we try to do our best in informing the public about what we're doing. I don't think that we try to hide anything. Like Paul said, Sarah sends out press releases quite often for us, or on social media. Welcome any suggestions, how we can be better, always do.
So with that, those were the seven recommendations made by the committee. Again, I want to thank all the members of the committee and anybody that participated in the listening sessions or filling out the surveys. For the time, I know there was a tremendous amount of time put into this. It's obvious by the report. Comment in, in just one second, and then we can open the floor. Before we do that, I do want to just make an announcement that our next scheduled public meeting is Tuesday, September the 17th. It will be here at 4:00. And at the conclusion of this meeting, I, we will be closing the public meeting and we will have a public hearing on the Deep Creek Watershed Zoning Ordinance Amendment for Farm Winery. So anybody that wants to stick around for that at the conclusion of this meeting, you are more than welcome. And then that will be open for a two-week comment period as well. So having said that, unless there's anything else from the commission, we will open the floor for public comment. And this does not have to be specific to the diversity committee. It can be on anything that anyone would like to comment on. But is anyone, does anyone have any questions or comments at this time? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, I can understand you saying you don't want to hire somebody full-time or part-time in this role. But a committee that would be formally recognized by the county would not cost money. And all the other recommendations that you say, "Oh, yes, we agree, we agree, we agree." How are you going to enforce it, support it? What's? You're not, I mean, it's just platitudes and nothing, nothing can happen and you will all be happy with that. And I think unless you have some way of monitoring, "Are these things happening?", I don't think they're going to happen. And I think it's going to hurt us economically. We do not have a very great reputation among many groups. And if you publicly had a group that was promoting diversity and inclusion, at least that would make an impression. But right now, by not even being willing to have volunteers who would cost no money being official part of the county, I think that I'm just sort of shocked by it.
Yes?
And by and well, I think it shows that you don't care. If you don't have a committee, that is the Garrett County Committee, you don't care. You don't care what's happened to these people. You read the report, you saw what they said. They appreciated the fact there was someplace to go to. What do you want us to have a little committee that we just form ourselves? No, we need stature. We need you to care, to hear these people. They all wanted to tell you things, and that's what we told you. Did you read the appendix? Did you hear what those people said? Do you really care? You say you care in a resolution, but do you? You don't even want to have a Garrett County Diversity and Inclusion Committee?
Yes, sir.
I mean, let's, let's stop shadowboxing here. You all said that you saw great validity in, in what was done by this committee. Your leaders in the county. You're going to be, you're under pressure from two sides right now. From people that say there's a cultural problem in this county, that ends up being an economic problem that needs to be addressed. And then you're under pressure from other people that say that's all nonsense. We have a great county here. These people are making stuff up. There's not a big problem here, a cultural problem. So you're under pressure from both sides. It sounds, it seems to me that you need to take a side right now. And if there's a real problem, you need to do something about it. A committee, recognizing a committee would be doing something about it. Coming back with a proposal to have a part-time position rather than a full-time position, if that's one day a week, two days a month, might be acknowledging that there's a problem. But you can't say there's a problem and then do nothing about it. You're going to hurt your own credibility.
The discussion, when they presented the report, there was a lot of discussion about, well, what's the process for making these policy decisions? And you said, "Well, we need to think about it." And, and you decided for this topic, having this discussion in this forum, I'm assuming that each of you studied this on your own and came to your own conclusions. Why, what goes into the thought process that this kind of a policy meeting on a subject that's critically important to a lot of people in the county only has this forum, but the zoning thing has a public hearing where you actually invite more people? If you'd said in this, if you'd said in this agenda that this meeting was not simply an update of this study, but it was to talk about recommendations, you might have had more people here. So what went into the thinking, that's my first question, of choosing this forum instead of a public hearing?
Well, I think the direct answer to your question is, in regard to the zoning amendment, it's required by law to have a public hearing. We can dance around semantics if you'd like, but the, the fact is, the actual reason that it's referred to as a public hearing for the watershed zoning ordinance is required by law. All of our meetings are open to comment like this at any time. So in, in regard to what was discussed here today, we're having a public hearing in, to some respect, of exactly that.
But it's not announced that way. It wasn't presented that way. It didn't even say we're going to talk about the recommendations. It said we're going to have an update. I thought you were going to announce a public, a public meeting. But anyway, so, so the answer is, we're not... But anyway, so the answer is, we're not having a public meeting because it's not legislative required?
No, we're having, we had a public meeting. This is a public meeting, Mike.
In the same sense as the public hearing for the zoning.
And everyone here in this public meeting has had every opportunity to ask questions and make their comments.
Do you think there would have been people, more people here if you said in the agenda that this was going to be discussing recommendations?
There may have been.
My second question, in 2021, you guys adopted that proclamation that you talked about, and you reaffirming the aspirational statements that were in that, it was very aspirational. And it was done at a time where this was a very visible emotional issue. And you were reflecting, I think, the feeling that a lot of people had. So that's one statement. Now, you know, we're bombarded by TBS every 30 seconds now, and my takeaway is that it's interesting to hear what people have to say, but you really can't believe politicians what they say. You have to look at what they actually do. And my takeaway from this meeting is, the three of you decided, "We're not going to do anything." Is that fair? Did I miss something? You're not, you're not, you're not going to do anything. So I'd like to ask each of you individually to say something about your lack of activity. Here's this aspirational statement that you all have subscribed to, but the takeaway from today's meeting, we're throwing up our hands if we don't have to do anything. I think that by Ann's comment, she's a very insightful and thoughtful person.
Wise comment for you to make.
I need to have dinner tonight. But it's true that the success of their first effort was largely a result of the fact that they could say, "The commissioners appointed us," because the commissioners want to know. And now they have to go back and say, "Well, the commissioners know," and the commissioners decided to throw up their hands and do nothing. So I'd like to ask each of you individually, how you try to explain the difference between your aspirational statements and your decision.
Well, excuse me. I think if we focus on the fact that we're not, that the commission decided not to hire a county-level position for diversity and inclusion, and if we focus on that there will not be a committee, what I heard, and I'm sure opinions will vary, the other five recommendations were support. The, of those, there weren't, most of them did not have a specific ask, but what was actually presented as the recommendation, we said we would support. So I disagree with your assessment that we're doing nothing, but if all we want to do is say, "We asked for a person to be hired, you're not doing that, we asked for the committee to be re-upped, and you're not doing that," that is an accurate statement based on this meeting. But I would say that, you know, we're just, I, what I heard was, we were going to reaffirm the resolution, that we would strongly support the school system in, and I will, I will stand my flag on that statement, that if the school board comes to me and says, "We need help with X," they're going to have a very receptive audience. I think that would be great, how you go about accomplishing that. I think if it were easy, it'd already been done, and I think many communities face that same question.
I think as leaders, we feel that if you all take his stand, it might open up some dialogue. Do you know?
Yes, sir. And then Len, you're next.
Okay, yeah, I'm top sphere, Ryan may not know any others, but I just think there's small things that you guys could take leadership on and make happen, right? Just in reading things in the report. It's like, you know, little things like, you put out a business card, and everybody has business cards, communities, and sometimes the communities will say, "A good place to do business," or they'll say, "Wonderful outdoor recreation," whatever they say. We could say, and you don't have to redo everybody's business card that's across, but you produce business cards from time to time, and you hire new people, and you guys run out of them, need them to be republished, and it could say, "Welcome to Garrett County, a community that is welcoming towards all." Something that simple, it doesn't cost anything, because you're going to create a business card anyway. Somebody has to take the initiative, "We're going to do this." The same thing that you can put up, you know, signs on your county offices that indicate the same kind of thing. Again, stuff that you do just in the course of your normal, they don't have to be extra expenditures, they don't have to be anything that you go, "How do you..." You just make it a part of how you function, how you do things. And you demonstrate by that kind of leadership that you want this to be a welcoming community. And recognize, you know what, if you did that, I, oh, I can't be sure, I bet you you'd get some pushback from people, like, "There's nothing wrong. Please make a report." There is stuff that's wrong, there's clearly stuff that's wrong. You know, we, if you've been involved at all, well, I've not really been involved in the public school system, I've been to college, where we have a significant minority population, most of whom are athletes, not many, many of them are recruited, come as athletes, they leave, right? There's a whole bunch of things that can lead to those decisions. But one of the things that they tell us, they told this committee, the reasons they leave is the non-welcoming atmosphere, the fact that they are not respected, that they, that everybody's looking at us, "Can't sit down and walk into Walmart." That's, this is part of our community. And the only way we're ever going to change that is if you three guys take leadership in trying to help us change it. So I guess maybe what a lot of us are asking is, "What are you, what can you do? What are you going to do?" Because I've just, I've just mentioned a couple more, those are small things, you can do them. You could tell the Garrett County Republican that we have decided that going forward, we are going to emphasize to the world that Garrett County intends to be, is, a welcoming place for all. You can get on the agenda for the, what is the upcoming dedication of the new AMD Center on September 23rd, whatever the date is, I think it's 23rd. Get on the agenda, Paul, maybe all three of you, go down there and say, "We're behind this, we're 100% in favor of this. This is a good, this is good for..."
I am 100% in favor of that.
Wonderful. Be a leader in this effort, and help us become a welcoming committee. Paul, that you wanted all of your, Larry, excuse you, Larry, that you wanted all of your, your little league players, boys and girls, to become. The things that you taught, those are those attitudes and those principles to be welcome. So let's take some contradictions into... Shut up. You've got time, I give up.
Len?
I just, I, you know, I'm trying to understand, I listened to Larry, and I listened to Ryan. Ryan's asking for more meat on the bones, what does this stuff really mean? Larry's saying he can find 200 people that would oppose this committee even existing, and I believe there's way more than 200. So that, so both of those, both of that, that dialogue says to me that, that a committee would be very useful. Put some meat on the bones, let's, let's make this real. And if there's people that don't think there's a problem in the county, let's, let's have a civil dialogue about whether there's a problem in the county. That's what, that's what a commit, you working with a committee would do, with people that are focused on that problem. That's what every other committee, and that's why you need committees. I mean, you know, we all know why we need committees. I think you made a case for why you need it, not why you don't.
I'm not sure that anybody has convinced you, but I just wanted to ask that if a volunteer committee did, did agree to convene, and came to you during meetings with specific recommendations, I just wondered if you, as a board, would remain open, if you see their work, if they honed some of these suggestions, to be more specific, if you could at least keep an open mind that maybe in the future you could see it as a valid official committee, if they begin working now as a citizens committee?
I think, I can, I'll only speak for myself, I always try to have an open mind all the time, and if that situation presented itself, I would be willing to have the conversation.
Yes, also.
Dwayne?
So, Dwayne here, and I guess it's my privilege to chair the committee, most of the meetings I don't, I, I'm not, I can't, I'm not speaking for the committee specifically, I don't think it's the role of the committee to take in, to get into strong advocacy, pros on, on the discussion there. But I do think, I, I mean, I feel I need to talk a little bit about, to clarify, to make a clarification on some of these issues. I mean, the committee took the responsibility of trying to identify the issues, findings, and spent a lot of time on that. One of the charges, Len, was to advise the commissioners based on those findings with the recommendations, which is what is in front of you now. And the, the recommendations that were lifted are tied specifically back to the findings. And to Ryan's point, which was that some of the findings seem like they lack specificity. In part, if you look at the findings that relate to those recommendations, there are many, many aspects to it, and there would have been many, many action steps, that would have had to fall under the recommendations to be, take act, you know, to create action steps. So one of the thought patterns of the committee was, that by creating or giving responsibility to a county staff position, or having a committee that is functioning and continuing, some of those action steps would be, would be clarified in the form of maybe a strategic plan with, you know, a goal, objectives, and action steps. So that was part of the thought pattern in terms of trying to, to come up with action steps that relate back to those findings. What we were afraid of is that our findings would have, would end up being like 20 different findings, and it would just kind of be lost in the, in the smalls. So, you know, that, that, that was the approach that the committee took, and in part, the continuation of a, a committee appointed by the commissioners and assigning responsibility to a staff position with a way of getting at some of that specificity, Ron, that you identified, and I agree with what you said in terms of the recommendations. But that's just a point of committee clarification in terms of how we were approached.
Thank you, Dwayne. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I wanted to follow, I had a couple of follow-up questions, and that's when you down there had actually commented on one of mine, was about continuing that committee, and if you guys could endorse some of it. What would the other kind of question and comment at the same time is, like, if, what would it take to get that committee appointed by you guys in the future? If they, and I think it was really good feedback for the committee, I think for the first stab, you guys did really good work, and then hearing the good point, like, "Well, we needed more recommendations," and then, you know, you were insightful, I think it was all really, really good stuff. So if the committee keeps doing, you know, independently, and bringing you guys stuff that's more specific to, you know, putting pronouns on your business cards in the future, just small things to incorporate, you know, that they could bring you, actionable things that you could do to be more inclusive, what would it take then, if you see the good work that they're doing, that you guys kind of initiating the role, rolling to thank you guys for that, what would it take to get the committee appointed in the future? Like, will we have to, how does that work in the commissioner's role to ask that you guys to consider in the future?
I think just what you just said. I mean, it would have to be an ask, which, I mean, it's an ask right now, let's just be blunt about it, it's an ask right now, and, and has been denied, but, you know, we, people ask for stuff all the time, you know, who knows, could be new commissioners, it could be, you know, all kinds of stuff, there's variables at play. I, I would encourage, as I always do, that anyone that feels passionately about anything should feel free to make the request. Certainly doesn't mean the request is going to be honored, but they can always make the request. Yes, sir?
My name's Craig Cupper, I don't think anybody knows me from, I'm a local resident. Have to admit, my ignorance of, you know, how government works around here in a lot of cases, so I had to look up, I think I found online, a list of Garrett County boards and committees, and I count around 28, does that sound about right?
Probably.
And many of them are, you know, I mean, I don't think anybody would argue that these are good committees to have, but as I was just going down the list, looking at them, you know, one that just kind of stood out in comparison to this ask, you know, that we had to have a committee that was appointed by the commissioners, here's a committee called the Mental Health Advisory Committee. Great. Great purpose. The purpose of this organization shall be to serve as an advocate for a comprehensive mental health system for persons of all ages in Garrett County.
I'm one I commend.
That's great. I don't understand fundamentally why the DEI committee...
That, that committee is not all appointed by us, there are some that's appointed by us.
Yeah, to your question, and, and I appreciate the question, or what I think is your question anyway. So the committees that we have, many of them, if not most of them, are mandated by the state. Some of them are created by different organizations to which we have representatives and we will make appointments to as part of the broader whole. So if the health department has a committee that they have to have, they may ask us to appoint two or three members to that. I know we have multitudes of committees that we did not give them a charge and create them, they were created by somebody else, I think, and I could be wrong about this, as far as county-originated committees are concerned, just purely Garrett County committees, there are very few. And most of them are, I don't know, temporary, for lack of a better term. Mike alluded to earlier, we commit, when Larry and I first started out, and, and we were engaged in the fracking debate, we created a committee to serve the purpose of trying to advise specifically on that issue. That issue was taken away, committee dissolved. We created this committee, as stated, for a one-year timeframe to analyze an issue. It has come to a conclusion, which I said at the beginning, if we were going to reestablish it, it would have to be given a different charge by definition and be reappointed. So I don't, I can't think off the top of my head of any purely county committees right now that are in, in effect. And there, there might be one or two, I just can't think of.
Yeah, I don't want to say that for a fact.
But that hopefully lends some clarity to what you received. Scott?
Scott Almond, if I can just make this personal, I have a granddaughter who's biracial. Her dad is a black guy, wonderful guy, enjoys company, did not know my daughter was going to fall in love with a black guy. My granddaughter is this tall, beautiful little girl, brown skin, really kinky hair, they have to work on her hair all the time. Wonderful little girl. I would not encourage her to go to school in Garrett County. I would not encourage her to live in Garrett County. And I think that's that, you know? So just to make it personal, not while I was on the committee, you all may have grandchildren that are biracial.
Mike?
Well, in fairness to you guys, on the fracking debate, there were two advisory committees appointed before you guys took office, and they were intentionally set up by having people from both extremes come, so they never got anything done. And you guys took a very responsible position, in my view. And you guys took a very responsible position, in my view, and picked people that represented different perspectives, but they all cared enough in Garrett County to actually try to get something done, because they were all concerned about the impact of fracking, they have different perspectives. So, I mean, that was, to me, a model of how these things should be done. I have two observations, one of them is based on more information that I've gotten since we've had this discussion. You read the charge that you had approved in 2021, I think, setting up the committee, and you said that it's accomplished that charge, because that charge did not have any, my career was doing policy, and the first step you always take is to do a reconnaissance to find out what the situation is. And that's what this committee did, and I think they did probably much more than anybody would expect they could get done. The second step is to say, all right, given this, what's the strategy, as Duane said, and as Ryan has suggested, what's the strategy for really addressing these concerns? And that wasn't part of their charge, at least not part that you read. So, it seems that I, the whole discussion has led me to the inescapable conclusion that there should be a continuing county committee to do exactly that, continue the dialogue, and I understand, you said you heard from a lot of people, this is just an observation, not question, you said you've heard a lot, a lot of people, and I imagine there are a lot of people in the county that think this is a bad idea. This is a, this is a contentious issue in a lot of different settings, and the trend seems to be moving towards de-emphasizing DEI. But that was not part of their charge, and to say that, that, that we're deficient at this point because they didn't address what wasn't their charge, I, to me, it just seems like the, the, everything we talked about, it doesn't cross the county anything, it gives it more credibility, it continues dialogue, everything we talked about, to me, is a compelling case for doing it. I haven't heard a compelling reason for not doing it. My second observation is, if we leave today and you guys have not taken any action, that really makes that piece of paper from 2021 worthless, because we're saying we have these aspirations, but we're not kind of left a finger to take an initiative to do anything. And I think that's unfortunate. A process question. You didn't really vote, the only, the only recommendation you voted on was the statement, reissuing the statement. Is that how the, so, I leave saying, well, a decision was really never made. I guess a decision's made if nobody says we want to make a motion to take proactive. Do you have to vote each recommendation either yes or no, or do you say, if nobody takes a purpose active step, then the answer's implicitly no?
I think, if I understand your question, I think from a process standpoint, we have the leeway to do it any way that we want to, in, in regard to how, you know, we, we could have taken the whole slate, we, I thought it was best, and this was my idea, to take it one by one, so that there could be part of the conversation to each one individually. And then, the way that I would explain it, if you, for example, to take the one on creating a position, if you ask for a motion and no one makes a motion, then there's no movement forward, so implicitly it dies for lack of a.
It dies for lack of a.
Yeah. Usually, in my experience, from a process standpoint, you don't make motions in the negative, so you wouldn't make a motion not to do it, you just wouldn't make a motion to do it, if that makes sense. And that's, that's just the way that I've come up, running meetings, you, you either vote to do something, or you don't, but you don't vote not to do something, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I've, I've been involved in a lot of these state tax committees, and usually there's a recommendation, and people vote on the recommendation, either yes or.
Up or, up or down vote, yeah. And you, we could have done it.
Either passes or fails.
Right. Lynn.
I just want to say, my son, well, my grandson is transitioning, and, and she is she now, and she has really, she has moved out of Garrett County. She moved to Cleveland, where she was also bullied by teachers, she finally got out of school, took the GED, and, and things are going to be okay, but that's the significance of them, and I don't, I don't want to be overdoing dramatic suicide rates among these communities, it's very, very hard, and to say nothing of the kids who are just sort of depressed and, and having all the time. And if one committee, or if one of you, even just one of you, would work with the committee, it would validate who these, I honestly think it's adults too, who these people are.
Yeah, I was actually thinking, if you do, they continue the committee, would one of you guys sit on that committee? Would your time then be there?
Well, I mean, the committee currently doesn't exist, so that.
If it did.
But if it did, yeah, someone could.
Not, not a county-level committee, but just a committee.
The, the last, the la, the committee that just concluded did not have a commissioner on it on purpose, because, yeah.
I remember.
Commissioner Savage was part of the initial group, and it, because.
Advising yourself.
Exactly, well, yeah, and that, that was sort of the thought process.
I think you guys would be rock stars, you know, instead of you getting a county, I might be saying it wrong, so forgive me, county-level community, committee, you know, I think you guys would be total rock stars if you created the first one, but how.
Let me clarify, we have had them in the past, and I don't know, I can't sit here and tell you for certain we do or we don't right this minute, there have been county committees in, in the past.
This one in particular would make you guys rock stars. But how, so if the committee does that work, and now specifically targets recommendations that the county can do to do some of the schoolwork, you know, Pride Month, and they bring you, how do they bring you those recommendations? How does that kind of work?
Public meeting, just like this, at the end of every public meeting, we have a session, this is one of the longer ones, but that's fine, for any citizen with any topic to ask questions, make comments, that can make recommendations. The only thing that I would ask is, if you're going to do that, if anybody was going to do that, you're going to give us a heads up, so we can prepare for it, but certainly, every meeting's open to the public, we have a, a comment-question period at the end of every public meeting, but that's how that will take place.
Yes, ma'am.
I have an ask. When I was doing the listening tours, they all thought you were listening. I have an ask. I would like very much for you to hold a public session for the commissioners for a listening session on DEI issues in the community. You could have it at the college and put it forth as a public listening session, and people could come and talk to you. You need to hear from them. I heard from them, broke my heart. That's my ask.
And you could get some of the people who would oppose the committee, if that comes in.
Exactly, and, and.
I think they would come and speak.
And actually, I think you need to hear from those people.
Absolutely.
Because then you would see how much this is needed. So, I have an ask. Will you please do a public session, a listening session, where you listen to the people?
Well, we hear from people on the other side, too, if we do, what issues are.
They probably heard from people on the other side.
Well, one thing I would like to, to make a comment on, and, and Lynn, I, I hear what you're saying, and I agree totally. It bothers me immensely, and I know I said this earlier, but I made a career working with young people, I'm very proud of that. It bothers me a lot to know that there are kids, and I don't care what situation they're under, whether, whether it's a, you know, a race-related thing, gender identity, sexuality, handicap, I don't care what it is, that, that kids go to public school that oftentimes they don't have a choice on, and, and face ridicule, bothers me. Having said that, just for everybody's knowledge, because not everybody knows this, so I, I'm, I hope I'm not offending anybody by saying this, but the Garrett County commissioners have zero authority over the Garrett County Board of Education. So, when you're talking about policy points or issues of that nature, I would strongly recommend that you direct them to the Board of Ed. And, and that's why I said, when, when we were looking at the, the recommendation to support the public school system, I mean, I, I think the answer to that was a resounding yes, but it would have to come from the school system, and they would have to kind of initiate that, because we, we can't go to them and say, you have to do this. I just want everyone to understand that. We, we don't have that authority in Garrett County to, to do that. And I will say, I, I do think, and, and again, perspectives are all different, and I'm sure people have different ideas about this, but I, I think, I would like to think that the, the hierarchy of the Board of Education and the elected board members are sympathetic to issues of bullying and, and all of that stuff. Just wanted to make that statement so we're on the same page. Mike.
My background's in policy, I'm not really a process person, I don't have the patience for it, because it takes a lot of patience to get the details, Board of Education's harder than worst. Since this has not been voted on, it's been put in a drawer, and I know in an app, where sometimes things come out of the drawer to reconsideration, is that something that's an open possibility? At some point in the future, you say, all right, after we have a public hearing, maybe we want to rethink whether we have a committee to continue the style. Is it still an open question, because you really never voted down the idea of continuing the committee? And you just said, at this moment, it doesn't exist.
Right. I mean, I, I think the possibility exists, yes, I think, I mean.
If you have.
Nothing precludes us from doing that, let me put it that way.
And if you had a public hearing, like a very wise person suggested, it might provide the opportunity to reconsider how to move forward in the county. All right, thank you.
Any other que, yes, ma'am.
Just a brief one. At the listening session, we repeatedly heard that we were listening to the wrong people. We listened to the folks that showed up and shared with us their challenges with mental health access, with bullying, whatever the issue was, racial issues, but we did not have the members of the community who are opposed to diversity and culture and inclusion. And a public meeting would be the first opportunity that we would have to hear from individuals like yourselves and anybody else who is uncomfortable with the idea that Garrett County could grow culturally by embracing diversity and inclusion. It, it would be answering the question from the lis, the listeners that we heard, which was, you're not listening, you know, you've got the wrong people here. It's kind of like the Women's Equality Celebration that we had last week, fabulous event, but again, we've got the wrong people in the audience. We don't have people who can make those kinds of policy, policy decisions. We have women supporting women, which is great, don't get me wrong, I love it, but once again, it demonstrates, we don't have the people in the audience that we need to be hearing from. I met an African-American gentleman at Walmart at a 9:30 on a Sunday night during our listening tour, who's lived in Garrett County 32 years, and I have never laid eyes on this gentleman ever. And I've worked in Oakland all of my adult life since I moved here, and I asked him, why is it that I've never seen you about town? And he said it was deliberate. He said it was deliberate, they do not do things in the county for fear of being racially profiled. So, it's a no-brainer to continue, it's a no-brainer.
We, I think this might be encouraging to you guys and to anybody else listening, and to appreciate this club for myself, to call me to be included in your classes, community if you keep doing the work. We met with Special Secretary Emily Keller today, Reflection House did, and she toured the Reflection House, and we talked about how we have a room devoted just to people who are transgender, and she welcomed it and embraced it, without, the state is definitely going towards that way, and I think that one, when I, when listening to everybody, one of the recommendations, and as a person wanting to see this thing happen, and be on the Reflection House board, I would love to see, like, businesses listed who are allies or people who are inclusive. I think it would send a message to the state that, you know, Garrett County is making some efforts, easy way for you guys to get behind and identify some of the local businesses and organizations that are included. We just did that, actually, for a camp, a biracial camp that came to Garrett County, they rented the entire wiz for their protection, and we, we came up with a list of businesses that would welcome biracial families. So, the state is definitely, if the state wants to.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
I just wanted to say, do you say quite it?
Do you say whether?
Okay.
If there are no other comments, we'll go ahead, I'll take a motion to adjourn, and then we will, well, no, let me, let me hold that. At this time, I will take a motion to close the public meeting and open a public hearing on the Deep Creek Watershed Zoning Ordinance Amendment for farm wine. All right, at this time, we are now in a public hearing. Chad, I'll ask you to come up and present the material. Thank you all for coming. Apparently, nobody cares about the farm wine.
Yes, this is Amendment to the Deep Creek Watershed Zoning Ordinance. This was originally brought to our attention by Mr. Ohm. This is something that's not specifically addressed in the ordinance, it doesn't have a farm winery category, so we looked into it and decided to present the planning commission, we discussed it at several meetings. We came up with this definition, a winery operation can have an approved Maryland Class III or IV winery license, and conducted on property classified as agricultural by the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation. A farm winery may conduct wine tastings that include accessory food sales and have retail sales of wine and winery-related products. One of the challenges with this is, we had proposed this to go into all areas of the watershed, and that includes areas that are now residential or resource-based, and those don't typically allow things like taverns, retail, and restaurants, so this is somewhat of a combination of those two uses, so the requirements that we came up, we're trying to balance that, so this was something that could be appropriate in those areas all throughout the watershed. So, a maximum of 500 square feet of floor area may be devoted to retail sales of wine and winery-related products. At least two acres of the ingredients used in the production of beverages must be grown on-site, and the growing area must be established within two years of approval. Minimum total land area is 20 acres. The setbacks for any structures used for retail sales or tastings will be 75-foot front, 100-foot side, and 100-foot rear, and then this will be a special exception in all districts, so this will still go to the Board of Appeals, they will get to hear it, they'll decide if it's appropriate for the specified location, and then they'll also put any conditions on it if they think that's appropriate, so. That was how we tried to balance this, to allow it in all areas, you know, protect nearby residential subdivisions, things like that.
All right, are there any questions from the audience? So, we will hold the comment period open for two weeks in regard to this, and then the next step then is, we would vote to adopt the ordinance, so. If anybody feels strongly about this, one way or the other, you can email us, or catch one of us, call us, whatever, and the next meeting, we should be on track to adopt the amendment. Chad, thanks for your word.
Just in Deep Creek Watershed, the rest of the county, it's not zoned, there's not that specific use of information, just deep.
Thank you very much, sir. If there are, yes.
Just point of reference, excuse me, before you adjourn, we did have some technical problems with Facebook, and the meeting video went up and down, it was not intentional, but there are some gaps that occurred during the process.
All right. If there are no other comments or questions, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Meeting adjourned, thank you all very much. This is one of the longer meetings we've had in one.